Can I have a board member certified closed session, please?
Madam Chair, certified to that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law. And that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel.
Ms. Chen. Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel. Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
And I would like to extend a very warm welcome to my new seatmate, Dr. Kiefer, our acting superintendent. And turn it over to him for announcements and a report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like to begin this afternoon by formally, but very briefly introducing myself to the community. I'm Daniel Kiefer and honored to continue serving Williamsburg James City County Schools as acting superintendent. I appreciate the board's confidence in me as I assume this role. And I'm committed to work tirelessly each day to keep this school division moving forward as we champion the success of every student. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. On behalf of WJCC schools, students, family and staff, I'd like to thank each of you, our school board members, for your heartfelt and dedicated service. Beyond your twice monthly scheduled meetings, school board members volunteer their time and presence at countless school and community activities. Advocate locally, advocate in Richmond, advocate in Washington DC, all for the WJCC schools community. And you help set the direction for our school division. This month and over the course of the year, we recognize and appreciate the numerous hours you tally in service to WJCC schools and the impact of your leadership on our community. Thank you for that. In honor of Black History Month, students are engaging in a wide range of intentional learning experiences from project-based learning activities, virtual field trips, and reading literary works about African-American leaders. Please join us in celebrating the countless contributions Black Americans have made and continue to make on our country, state, and the Williamsburg James City County community. Finally, this afternoon, we celebrate National School Counseling Week and recognize our school counselors' efforts to help focus students on academic career and social emotional development as they achieve success in school and are prepared to lead fulfilling lives as responsible members of society. Please join me in thanking our school counselors. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Are there any reports from board members? Not today.
Madam Chair, I have two.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Go ahead.
The first one is, we had a Division Safety Committee meeting a couple of weeks back. And I'll preface my remarks with this and just saying that the intent of the Division Safety Committee is to basically prepare our students, prepare our employees and teachers, not to necessarily scare them. So the drills that they're doing is just to basically get into everyone's mindset of how to react. And not to be, so it's not new when the situation comes up. They've been conducting several lockdown drills at different schools and they will continue to do that between the schools and the local police. There's going to be some additional cameras are going to be put up in various schools in different places that currently either don't have cameras or the cameras aren't working properly. So that we have a full coverage for all the areas of the different schools and the different doors in schools. And we have a couple upcoming meetings in March and in May. So that's for those issues. Our next issue I want to talk about is New Horizons. We had a local meeting, a recent meeting, and we had a presentation from the Governor's School in their aquaponics research department. Part of their department has 3D printers. And what they've done is, is there's been local agencies or local businesses that have been requesting assistance. One recent one was Virginia Living Museum needed a part. And so they turned over to New Horizons and it was the Eddy Lab, and I'll just quote it, the engineering, design, innovation, and entrepreneurial lab to create this part with their 3D printer. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And they talked about, again, the aquaponics cycle and the planning or the training that they're doing with the aquaponics. And just to give everyone, I guess, a brief education on this area. Aquaponics is a combination of aqua culture, which is raising aquatic animals such as fish or prawns in tanks, with hydroponics, which is cultivating plants in water. And what it is, is basically a cycle. So you have the fish, the fish produce a waste product. That waste product then is converted by microbes and worms into fertilizer that plants can use. And then those plants filter the water that goes back into what the fish have. So it's a continuous cycle. And so the students are learning about that. And they've partnered with CNU, Virginia Tech, and various other organizations for this, for these products or projects. And one that has real-world application is there's a local, a city or county that has an extremely large aquaponics system where they use it to fill their local food pantry. So they have fresh vegetables, they have fresh fish that they go into the food pantry for individuals. So that was something that they're looking at in a larger context. We went over new fees for the career technical education students. And most of those fees have not gone up this year, which is a credit to New Horizons and their staff in what they can do and what they're trying to do with the different providers. So any students that are applying for next year, a lot of the fees for those students are going to be the same from what they are this year. And if they do go up, it's a minimal amount of a dollar to maybe $10 total. And finally, regarding the budget, New Horizons was, they were finalizing their budget at the end of last month. And they were submitting drafts to the division and superintendents. I'm not sure if that's come down just yet. It may come down this week or early next week. But so we can be on the lookout for how much they're requesting for Williamsburg James City County to provide for them. And that concludes the announcements, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoseng. I think that was it then. So we will move on to proposed agenda items. Item 5.01, review the purchase request for CBB Elementary School HVAC upgrade.
Mr. Schnipes will join us this evening to talk about both this agenda item 501 and then also 502. Marcellus?
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kiefer. Tonight's proposed agenda item is being brought for your consideration is the review of purchase requests for Clarburg Baker Elementary School HVAC dehumidification project under annual contract number 19-13739. The Clarburg Baker HVAC system was designed in 1998 and the train manufacturer system remains unchanged. Recent inspections, we discovered that the building was not ventilating efficiently and allowed too much humidity to remain in the building. The scope of the work for this project includes replacing 81 water-sourced and ground-sourced console heat pumps in the classrooms. Phase one of the installation will be eight units over the spring break. And phase two of the 73 units will occur during the summer of 2025. Currently, we have three mechanical contractors under annual contract. The Clarburg Baker HVAC system, as I mentioned earlier, is a trained product. And the equipment will be sole sourced with train to match the current HVAC system at Clarburg Baker Elementary School. Funding for this project was included in the FROI 21 year-end spending plan in the amount of $1,350,000. There is currently $1,173,154 remaining for construction. The acting superintendent recommends the school board review the bid information and be prepared to award the Clarburg Baker HVAC Upgrade Project at the February 18, 2025 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Schnipes. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the next one.
Your second agenda, proposed agenda item for tonight, is the request for a permanent easement at Clarburg Baker Elementary School in real property to James City County. In October 2024, the county board of supervisors approved the conveyance of the parcel of land at 3175 Iron Brown, identified as James City County Real Estate Tax Number 471010057 to WJCC schools, subject to the granting of an easement to allow citizens to access Powhatan Creek Trail. James City County is requesting that the school provide an easement in perpetuity at Clarburg Baker Elementary School as part of the original agreement to transfer the land from the county for the construction of the new pre-K center. The easement shall be for the purpose of allowing general public ingress and egress to Powhatan Creek Trail and constructing, installing, and maintaining Powhatan Creek Trail for the general public and related facilities. The acting superintendent recommends that the school board review this, review this request for a permanent easement and be prepared to vote at the February 18, 2025 school board meeting.
All right, thank you. Any questions? And I'll note if you might have said this, but that there's really not dollar amount attached to it.
There's no, there's no funding cost requested from the board. Per standard procedure, there is a $10 is a standard consideration amount to be paid to James City County listed in the recorded deed.
All right, thank you. All right, then we will move on to our information and discussion items. Item 6.01, WJCC Schools Foundation Annual Status Report.
Madam Chair, thank you. We are delighted to have Ms. Penny Polley with us this evening, I guess this afternoon, to share the annual report from the foundation. Ms. Polley, thank you so much for being here.
Why, thank you for having me. Hello, greetings, everybody. Thank you for your dedication to our schools and our students. Appreciate everything you do. Okay, well, as you're probably aware, there's a packet, part of the report that I'm giving tonight is in your packet. And I'm just going to summarize the report. The WJCC Schools Foundation is a 501(c)(3) with the mission to partner with the community to provide resources that enrich teaching and inspire learning in helping our public schools toward education excellence for all students. What that means is that we are empowered to raise money for and increase awareness of the accomplishments and needs of WJCC schools. Since 2016, our signature project has been the Innovative Learning Grant, which provides funding to teachers for creative, forward-thinking projects in classrooms across every grade level and every school in the division. Much like research and development in private industry, these funds allow educators to try something new to see if their concept can blossom and grow into years of educational opportunities. In 2022, the foundation took on the important role of sponsoring the Teacher of the Year Awards, recognizing outstanding educators who go above and beyond their student, for their students. We contribute money to each teacher commensurate with the level of award. And we use our megaphone to give teachers the recognition they deserve. Additionally, in 2022, we started the Teacher Supply Shop, which continues to be a vital resource, providing free classroom supplies to teachers, librarians, social workers, and other division staff, alleviating the financial burden of purchasing basic materials out of a teacher's pocket. The store is managed by the school division and we provide money and volunteers. So you might say, who runs this place? Well, I am Penny Polley, the chair, and I work with our Board of Directors, which currently consists of 20 individuals who attend meetings and retreats with the goal to garner support for public schools. The board also provides significant financial donations and they give their time and volunteer hours to maintain strong community ties. We recently increased the Schools Foundation Board of Directors by four and added several new volunteers who play an essential role in program success, funding, and community engagement. Looking ahead, the WJCC Schools Foundation remains committed to expanding its impact and further enriching educational opportunities for students. Our plans include 10-year celebration events. As I said, we started in 2015, October of 2015, and so we're planning some events around that. Also, we have, with the assistance of the school division, we have spearheaded the Alwyn Heron Scholarship, which will, we will create and administer that scholarship in honor of Dr. Heron's tenure as school superintendent. We aim to increase donations by focusing on donor engagement through these anniversary events and activities. We also aim to increase funding for innovative learning grants to ensure that even more teachers and schools can benefit from innovative classroom projects. Also, we want to increase community awareness of the Teacher Supply Shop to meet a growing need and strengthen partnerships with community groups and businesses to support long-term sustainability. In summary, the Schools Foundation has had a significant and positive impact on the educational experiences of students within the division. With the continued support of the community and of the WJCC School Board, the foundation will remain a powerful force for enriching teaching and inspiring learning across all WJCC schools. We look forward to working together with you to achieve the shared goal of educational excellence for all students. And finally, we extend to you a special invitation. We invite you to attend the Awards Day Celebration on February 14. The Schools Foundation delivers the grant money of the Innovative Learning Grant. We deliver the grant money, we surprise the teachers in their classroom with balloons and whatever else we can think of, and give the money directly to the teachers on Valentine's Day. We begin around 8 o'clock in the morning. And we invite the school board to come and participate in this exciting day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polley. Thank you for that wonderful report and for that exciting invitation. That sounds very fun. And we are, our community is extremely lucky and we're grateful to have a foundation like this to support our teachers and our students ultimately, and bring our community together for such a wonderful cause that we all care about. So thank you so much for everything you do.
Yeah, well, that's our goal. That's right. All right, well, thank you and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 6.02, a discussion of what a school renaming process might be. This was, this is an answer to a request that we made in the previous calendar year during a meeting because there has been some requests to look into what it would take to rename a school. And the board has asked to just be informed of what that process would be. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ortega. Ms. Wall will walk through the potential process to rename a school. Carr?
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kiefer.
That helped.
There we go. No, thank you. I'm all set. This afternoon, I'd like to walk through several items as they relate to renaming a school. Policy FFA, school names governs names of schools. We'll discuss the process that could be implemented to rename a school, how a committee could be established, and what its responsibilities could be, and the timeline to complete those various steps. And finally, we'll review considerations for implementing a name change. This is the first of four slides that will display Policy FFA, school names in its entirety. I won't read the whole policy, but rather pull out key points of each paragraph. Here, policy states the final naming authority of schools rests with the school board, and the board will solicit public input regarding school names. Suggested names must be made in writing and rationale should accompany the suggestion. Policy states the school board may create a committee to facilitate this process. It's the administration's recommendation that the board should establish a committee, and I'll speak more to that shortly. Via policy, it is encouraged that a school name represent a distinctive attribute of the community as opposed to an individual. If the school is to be named after an individual, the individual must have been deceased for at least 10 years. And finally, it is at the board's discretion to determine if or when it is appropriate to rename a school, following the same procedure that I've just outlined. If the school board would like to activate a committee and properly engage a school's community on a renaming, we believe the process would take three to four months. As it specifically relates to James Blair Middle School, if a renaming process were to begin this month and subsequently a committee were to convene, the board could receive the committee's final recommendation on May 6 and be in a position to take final action on May 20. As mentioned earlier, though not required by policy, it is administration's recommendation that a committee be established to facilitate this process. Once established, the committee would be responsible for reviewing any history, available data, and records from past naming processes, which in the case of James Blair was 2017, identifying the criteria to be used to evaluate name suggestions, determining the specific steps and timeline to collect community feedback, and then ultimately providing its recommended action to the school board. We envision that the composition of the committee would be made up of individuals currently connected to James Blair, students, staff members, parents or guardians, and residents within the school's attendance zone. Any individual who meets one or more of these criteria could put forward their name to be considered as part of the committee. Other specific roles would be included by invitation, for example, a member of the school board. As the board considers the timeline and possible process to potentially rename James Blair, we wanted to share a few notes related to implementation. Upon selection and approval of a new name, several purchases will take place to formalize the new name for the building and the school community. With the proposed May timeline in mind, non-binding bids could be solicited in advance, so the purchase process could so the purchase process could unfold as early as May twentieth, assuming, again, final Board action on a name on May twentieth. Excuse me, I think I said May twentieth twice. Uh, if the Board were to approve final action on May twentieth, that would allow the purchasing process to unfold as early as May twenty-first, excuse me. That timeline could allow for purchasing to take place in this fiscal year. Some projects, for example, resurfacing the gym floor with the school's new name would not take place until after the last day of school, which could become an FY twenty-six purchase. As context to the Board's conversation, this slide shows estimated one-time costs to implement a name change at James Blair. And, um, as you can see, some of these items were carryover from twenty eighteen that we did not seek current estimates, so the numbers reflected could end up being slightly higher than what's presented on the screen, for example, for the exterior sign and school name. I'd be happy to answer any questions or facilitate discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Are there any questions from Board members?
I do have one question.
Okay, Mrs. Donner.
How, actually, I, I have the answer to my question, never mind.
Okay.
Those are the best questions.
Yeah.
Well, you stopped yourself from asking a dumb question, so.
Alright, are there any? No questions or comments?
Oh, my comment was, um, we do need to start the process. I'm in favor of starting the process.
I have a question about the committee.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is this how the committee has to be set up by? By the Policy FAA or, or FFA?
There, there is not a specificity around the committee establishment. I think as we talked about, wh- what could form an ideal committee for that purpose, we felt like a, a strong, broad cross-section of the James Blair staff, current students, and those that live within the attendance zone. I think we're also willing to take additional recommendations from the Board in terms of how that committee might be structured. We do feel like, if moving in this direction, we will want to be prepared immediately following the February eighteenth meeting, assuming there is a formal vote on moving forward with this to get the process activated.
Sure.
So, is there a particular suggestion that you would have?
I know, I just want to ask my additional question, might add to more of this. Why specifically are we looking at James Blair? Like, we have Clairebird Baker saved up for a person. I just wanted to, like, what are thoughts and rationale for this, this school in general? I was on the renaming committee at William Mary when I was there, and this can be pretty time-consuming for a community to go through. And I think we've got a couple emails that suggest that this may not be, I think, the Board should, they use time for, now, budget cycle. You know, like, it's a summer activity. I just want to, like, think about, like, if we're going this, like, why not do multiple at a time? Or, you know, just do one and we'll come back in six years, and there's another one, you know, it's like, I, I want to use government time effectively here, so.
Is that a question for me?
Or, anyway.
I, I believe so. I mean, we, we brought it forward as a, as an idea based on community feedback, I believe the Board has received.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Yes, it was presented more than, I mean, a majority of Board members were interested in hearing about what the process would entail. Um, I do, um, it's, there have been a number of reasons presented from community members on why they would want this name changed. Um, I agree that, that time and money, um, should be very wisely allocated, especially in view of the discussion we're about to have. Um, so, um, yes, that is part of, that is, the timing is part of the discussion. Um, whether this has to occur right now, um, is up for debate. Uh, we also don't have a signed contract between the city and the county. I mean, we're, we're all hopeful, but there, there is not yet a formal announcement, so that is also looming at this juncture. So, um, does that answer your question, Mr. Riffle?
Uh, I'm happy to proceed with this. I just don't want to get to a point where I'm also on the Board and we just didn't discuss another school this. I just, you know, I mean, I just think doing it multiple at a time with gathering this type of feedback is, is a really good use of government's time and everyone in this room, and then we do it again for somebody else that pops up in the community. So I think it'd be worth, between maybe now and then, like, there is a thought to do more than one, and let's do it now, and that, that's just my thought. I'm, I'm, I'm also, and I talked to the Chair about this previously, I'm in favor of naming after something that's not a person. I think it's kind of important to name it after a location, and then we kind of have some rules about that ourselves. Um, but, you know, we saw plenty of new constructions at a couple of conferences, and schools typically name it after the roads are around, or, you know, typical, like, landmarks, like Berkeley, you know, Green, or whatever it may be, you know, there's plenty that are around here in the historical area of Virginia. So, um, I, I just wanted to put that out to our community that we should think of other creative things to name it, not just a person. Um, and where I come from, a commending resolution is not the reason why I want to name something after something else. I think we commend park benches and flowers all the time, so I, I think it's important to think that there are other things that qualify someone to be naming a school. So, um, that's my thoughts on that behalf, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Uh, Mrs. Donner has a question or a comment?
Um, I just have a comment. I think in terms of kind of timing and, and Board, um, time applied to this, I think that there are, um, you know, I think as a Board, there are lots of different things that we tackle. We have been very diligent in moving through all of our policy work. And so at future Board meetings, while that used to be able to occupy a large amount of time um, for us to review those policies and vote on them, um, that is a burden that will, that will be alleviated over the next six months in terms of Board work, given the hard work of Dr. Kever and the Policy Committee. I think also from a funding perspective, um, one of the urgencies around the timing is that usually towards the end of the year, we have a sense of what some of our unspent funds are, and those funds be get, are returned back to our localities. I think this is an opportunity that if we are able to, um, you know, take community input, and if that is kind of the will of the community and the Board to make a name change, um, we would already have funds available to do that, given, um, the, the costs. And so that would be something that would not need to flow into the next budget that we are going to discuss. We would be able to use this year's funds in order to get that process started and get the major, um, appropriate, the major cost done in terms of the signage changes and some of those things. So those are my two comments in response to about timing. I think in the third, from a perspective of the, the split with the city, um, you will have a number of city residents who will be part of that conversation uh, with the structure of the committee. And so I think from a city perspective, um, with a lot of the work that they've done with the African-American Heritage Trail and things that they have done in terms of recognizing, um, the impacts of enslavement, um, on the descendant community, I, I would be surprised if the city had a concern about removing the name of an enslaver from the, a building, and so I think, well, that might be looming. Um, I'm, I, I would be surprised if the, if the city would have an issue with us being proactive and making that decision. So, those are my three comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Uh, Dr. Kevazos?
I just have one question. But, so, what's the process from today? What happens today? Do we vote to?
No, we're not voting today.
Good.
We are having a dis, we are being presented this information. We will, um, after this conversation, I, I will get with Board members, and we will decide if it needs to be something that is added to our agenda for the next meeting or a future meeting.
Thank you.
I have one, um, one question. What, um, having through the changing of, of the Rawlsburg to Laurel Lane, um, I know that was a very different circumstance, and it was very sudden. What, um, what repercussions and what impact did it have on current students, faculty, uh, the community, the parent community around it, operations? Just, can you describe at all what that, um, scenario was like?
The challenge for both Ms. Wall and myself is that we weren't currently, at that time, on the staff.
Okay.
Uh, I, I believe that process-wise, it happened in a, a, a different format.
Right.
And seemingly faster than we are attempting to suggest with this process. Genuinely, when you change, when you change the name of a school or a building or a program, there are going to be people that have feelings about that, one way or the other. And I think that part of what we tried to lay out with this process and the idea of the development of the committee was to provide all of the members of the community that wanted to have a input and part of the process an opportunity to participate. And I think that that feels like the right direction for this dialogue to go.
Was there anyone on staff who was here for the? On staff was here?
Mr. Snipes was on the staff, Mr. Landers and Mr. Baker.
Were there, nothing to add? Okay.
I believe, I mean, there were, you, there were sign changes, and there was a, a need in very quick fashion to, um, change things from one name to another. And it, it feels like in establishing this as a potential process, some of the scenarios that perhaps were encountered with that shift may not happen in this instance. That's, that's probably my, my best way to categorize it.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions at this time for anyone who hasn't said anything yet?
I know.
Or if you have, Mr. Riffle?
Church likes to thank you to the staff for putting something like this together. Um, I know it's not easy to kind of throw together, so. And I think, I think he said thank you, so that's why I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wall. Um, now we will move on to biggest discussion of the night. Uh, item six point zero three, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six Operating Budget Discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Ewing has some slides to share with members of the Board that we hope will generate some conversation, uh, and some discussion. And it would be, um, our desire at the conclusion of the discussion this evening to have a very good understanding of the Board perspective with re, with respect to the operating budget and what our initial request of the localities could look like. There, there are a number of different approaches that we can take, and we look forward to your discussion around it.
Thank you, Dr. Kever. Thank you, Dr. Kever. Good after, afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Kever. Last month, we shared a lot of information related to expenditure increases being considered for the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six Budget. This afternoon, we will be reviewing that information again, but looking at it in the following major categories. Mandatory increases, compensation, position requests, and other requests. I will also review the state revenue based on the Governor's proposal, as well as information related to the House and Senate budget versions. This table that we've shared previously shows our state revenue for next year based on the Governor's budget proposal, which is an increase of approximately two point four million. Details of the House and Senate ver, budget versions have been released, and both versions include funding to fully eliminate the cap on funded support positions. Additionally, funds are included to establish an add-on payment to basic aid for special education students. The estimated funding impact of these items could potentially be an increase of approximately one point nine million in revenue for us. The other item included in both the House and Senate budget proposals are funds for a one-time, one thousand dollar bonus payment for funded instructional and support positions. The approximate cost to provide a one thousand dollar one-time bonus payment to all W J C C staff is two point two million. The Senate version has this as a payment in June twenty twenty-five, while the House version has this as a payment in September twenty twenty-five. A preliminary amount of state funding provided under the House version is one point three four million, and the Senate version is one point two seven million. The cost to provide this bonus is not reflected in any of the information that we are presenting this aft, this afternoon, as it is not finalized and could impact either the current year or next year's budget. Moving on to the expenditures, the first category is a listing of expenditure increases that are considered mandatory. The items included here are mandatory staffing requirements for LEAP teachers and special education teachers and aides, funds to sustain the bus driver pay increase approved last month, anticipated increases in New Horizons and Special Education Private Day Tuition, as well as utilities and increases for contractual commitments that we have related to risk management, safety and security, grounds, H R and technology contracts, as well as Canvas and Lexia instructional programs. In total, these items amount to approximately three point two million and include fourteen point five F T Es. Looking at compensation-related items specifically, this includes a three percent salary increase for staff, as well as targeted adjustments for the teacher and unified scales recommended by Bolton's Compensation Study. The estimated fifteen percent increase in healthcare, which is currently a placeholder at a seventy thirty split, with W J C C taking on seventy percent of the increase. Additionally, funds are requested to support the Expanded Summer School Program that has been offered for several years, which has been supported by grant funding that is no longer available. There are funds to provide training pay to new W J C C teachers prior to the start of their contract, stipend requests, as well as contractual date changes for several positions. In total, compensation-related items amount to approximately ten million. Mr. Baker will now share specific details related to the Proposed Compensation Study Year One Items.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Kever. As a reminder of the information from Bolton's report, shows our lack of competitiveness with our peers across the teacher scale. We range from two point seven percent to eight point four percent behind our peers. As we look to implement a year-one plan from the Bolton Compensation Study, we would use one point nine million on the teacher scale to address where we are behind our competitors. We would target mid-career teachers to support their continued work within our organization. The average increase would be close to five percent, with some teachers receiving between eight and nine percent increase. The new beginning bachelor's teacher salary would be fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars per the Bolton recommendation. Teachers at the top of the pay scale who might not ordinarily be in line for a three percent pay raise would also receive a top-of-the-scale payment to ensure that they would also receive a three percent increase. We would also smooth out the transition between steps to ensure that we have at least point five percent between each step on the teacher scale. Similarly, as we consider the unified scale of a cost of six hundred thousand dollars, we would focus on our lowest-paid employees within grades five through sixteen, with over a hundred of those employees being brought to a new minimum with an overall increase of more than three percent. All staff on this scale would receive a minimum of three percent, and the new minimum pay would start out at fifteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. As with the teachers at the top of the scale, any employee at the top of the unified scale would also receive an additional payment to ensure that they also would receive a three percent increase.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. As a reminder, this is the estimated healthcare cost information that we shared last month. We are estimating a fifteen percent increase to our current year costs based on healthcare trend information shared from U S I last month. If that increase is split the same with employees as it has been on a seventy thirty split, it would mean an increase of two point eight million to our budget next year. You'll also see other potential impacts on this slide. If a sixty forty split is used, it would be an approximate two point four million increase to next year's budget. And if a fifty fifty split is used, it would be an approximate two million dollar increase to next year's budget. Moving on to the next category of expenditure requests, you will see here a compilation of the positions being requested, other than the mandatory ones for LEAP teachers and special education I E P related positions. They are separated into school-based staffing requests, which are at the top in the darker green. These include positions like classroom teachers, gifted and talented resource teachers, a counselor, additional special education aides, and elementary teacher assistants for behavior support. The next section represents positions that provide direct school support. These are positions that we recommend transitioning from grant. These are positions that we recommend transitioning from grant funds into the operating fund next year. And includes speech-language pathologists, as well as the K five literacy coordinator. The last section represents central support positions in human resources, finance and operations. In total, these position requests amount to approximately three point one million dollars and include just under forty-nine FTEs. The last category of expenditure increases are those that do not fall into the previously shared categories. These include funding to support AP exam fees for all students who enroll in AP courses. Funds to support the supply increases in the operations department. Funding for benefit administration services and funding for cognitive coaching and professional development. These items amount to five hundred fifty-eight thousand. As a reminder, this is a list of savings identified this far in the budget process, which amount to seven hundred twenty thousand. When you compare the estimated increase in state revenue of approximately two point four million. To our expenditure adjustments of sixteen point two million. The total shortfall amounts to approximately thirteen point nine million, which would become a request to our funding partners. We welcome the board's questions and feedback as we work to finalize the superintendent's budget proposal for presentation on February eighteenth. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Miss Ewing and Mister Baker. Alright, board, this is the, uh. The time where we do need to have a discussion, um, and we do need to be able to give some direction. At the end of this, it's obviously not a, a final vote on a budget, but we need to, um, be able to give. Miss Ewing and her staff, um, direction and I know we've all, I think I've spoken to all of you in the last few days, um. So, um. Anyone has a comment? Or any thing they want to say, go ahead and raise your hand, or otherwise I will go one by one. Mister Riffle, lead us off.
I still have a clarifying question, and especially, it's really not that big of a thing, I just want to know, what specifically is new tr- new teacher training pay? Uh, uh, I've seen this across divisions, um, and some other current budget cycles, I was interested what we're gonna be doing with it.
Sure. There are some divisions that increase the number of contractual days for new teachers for their orientation purposes. Instead of doing that, we offer an, an hourly rate over the course of two and a half days. Whereby we can compensate our new teachers for participation and orientation without increasing their contract time.
Super. I just wanted to also say like, it's a great move and I think it's pretty well. It's, it's pretty cheap compared to like some other trainings that other divisions have on there. So I, I just think it's a commendable thing to talk about and move on to the actual discussion, so.
Questions on the presentation, clarifying questions on. Line items, Mrs. Henley?
I, my two top pri- priorities are the compensation studies and. The, um, behavioral spe- specialist, um, in the elementary. Um, that's very important, um, just looking at even comments. Read all three hundred and ninety-seven or eight, um, di- discipline. We need some help in the elementary grades, teachers have said it, community has said it, so those are my two top priorities. The only thing that I would like to have clear though, is with the, with the compensation, when we say three percent. For everyone, the people that are capped or, um, at the top of the scale, we need. They need to know that, that there's a stipend attached to that. And that we did not say that tonight, and I think that's very important to have clear. And moving forward, but those are my. Top two things that if I had to pick.
So you're referring to something we encountered. That there are several steps at the top of the scale who, who don't end up getting a full three percent, is that correct? Because they max out.
I, I think that potentially occurs both on the instructional scale and the unified scale at some grades and, and what Mister Baker. Uh, attempting to mention is that those that reach the top will receive, um, an above-the-scale payment. That equals the three percent of their salary.
But we just.
We're seeking some additional clarification on how that could become creditable.
Yes, also that question, um, when we read justice scale, I just want to clarify for the public that. There are people who like think that when we remove steps, they, they actually won't receive a raise, like, you know, like if removing. From like a forty step to thirty or something like that now, and so. I, I want to, at most, every single person will be getting raises from this, right, that's. I know it's weird to say, but we have to kind of mention it here. Adjust the scale, you know, you have to.
Based on what we've heard from the board to this point, uh, our focus has been on ensuring every staff member will see a three percent increase. To his or her salary. So, some will see. A three, four, five percent raise, some will see a, a smaller raise percentage. But then an above the scale payment that in total equals out to three percent. Does that answer your question?
It does, I just wanted to clarify that like, when we're, you know, us removing step doesn't mean people aren't receiving more pay, right, like they are going to get to a point where they. Are receiving the percentage rates they deserve and, and if they're not at that point, their scales actually be more balanced. Because we're creating a scale of unity, not scale of, here's what we had before, you know, so.
Mrs. Henley?
Just one more thing, um. I don't know who did it last year, but they were able to, I think it was a teacher show. It broke down like when you say seven percent, eight percent, nine percent, it, it was just very nicely laid out. Is that something? I mean.
Show what, show the salary and real numbers?
Yes, so can we do that? I don't know how they did it, but it was done. Is that something we have access to? Do we have?
Like a pay scale?
If I understand what you're asking, based on what the person is potentially currently making now, layering the three percent. On top of that, in terms of what he or she would make in the future?
No, it showed, it showed, uh, the, the middle group. What their sal- what their salaries would be at those different increases.
We, we can, we can talk about maybe the best way to help visualize that. I, I do know that in working with finance and working with human resources, we are. Going employee by employee and looking at specifically at what is the, what is the current rate? How might that get adjusted relative to the scales that Bolton suggested? And then with the three percent or three and a half percent or four percent. The other piece that Mister Baker mentioned that I think is important, because it was a recommendation in the study. And it's something that we've noticed on our instructional scale is that there are. Some very compressed steps within our current instructional scale. And one of the things in the Bolton report that you may remember, it talked about smoothing the scale. And part of that smoothing process is to ensure that there is. A certain percentage point between each of the different layers on the scale. And our goal through this work, uh, and, and looking at that one point nine million was to create. Specific gaps between each of those step years. So, uh, I, I think that will be of benefit as well to the organization and to the, to the recipients.
So does that mean that currently there are uneven, um, gaps between? Rhyme or reason, it's just the way, it's just kind of evolved?
Mister Baker may be able to speak to, to how it has occurred, uh, there especially maybe steps. Six through twelve or fourteen right now, in some cases, there's a hundred dollar difference, in some case, there may be. Less than a hundred, in other cases, there may be three hundred and seventy-five dollar difference, so.
Correct, we, we've had some compression in years past, we might have been raising the entry level teacher pay up. And it may be compressed against the person who's been here two years, three years, four years, and now that's. Boa constrictor snake and it's making its way through the scale, um, as we have our own compression. And, and, and it's pretty typical for teacher pay scales across the country to have that, they're not all typically smooth. And we're getting closer, it'll, this will help, it won't be exactly the, the same in between each step.
So does that mean if, it, it, say we implement everything and every, everyone has point five between? Yeah, is that what it is, the point five percent?
At least.
At least.
Okay, but it will, so there might still be. Different ranges?
That's correct, I think we, this is our year one effort, I think that there. In, in years two and three, you might see us continue to create additional percentage between the progressions. And continue to move people. Closer to the midpoint of the competitive range.
And then if we. In future years, if a board raises. Entry level, you know, the, the bottom of the, will that automatically change the whole scale, or are we gonna start compressing again?
It depends on how we go about doing it, it's, some boards would say you, there's a. One and a half percent raise and a cost of living adjustment, there, there are, there are other ways to potentially approach it in future years. We have not necessarily done that in Wayneford, James T County recently, we've, we've said four percent, five percent, seven percent. And so part of our desire, I think, in going through the compensation study was to say. What might be the best way to do this initially, and then how do we smooth it out over the, the course of several years? So we don't find ourselves in a similar predicament four or five years from now.
What has been the history of the asks from the supervisors? How much money do we typically ask last, say, last five, ten years? Um, in general?
I know last year we asked for approximately seven million. Seven million be from the localities and we got five point four million of these.
So, the impression that thirteen million is a big chunk. It's a dramatic increase. And the question is. Do you really think you're gonna get thirteen million dollars? I mean, the population hasn't grown, the tax base is the same, not a lot has changed. I mean, we're not, you know, people aren't pouring into the city or the division. So thirteen million dollars is a very, very s- long stretch, uh, one very.
I, I didn't necessarily.
My question is, is it really reasonable to go after thirteen million dollars when more than likely, well. I'm just from what I know, because I'm an amateur at this, but it doesn't seem like if somebody comes in with a thirteen million dollar ask and you've been doing five and seven. You almost doubled it, that's, that's a big jump, and if that student population is staying the same.
Chair, there, there are a couple of unknown variables right now for us, and one of the unknown variables, I think. That we pointed out initially in the presentation is what, what additional funding may come from. The governor's budget, the general assembly budget, what happens at the state level? That state level budget would then have generally a net positive impact on. The amount that we would need to request from the localities, so there, there is, there is some potentiality there that that number. That you're seeing at thirteen million or so is decreased over the course of. The next several months as the budget process unfolds in Richmond.
Substantially?
I think we would hope so.
Everybody can help, but I mean.
It's like, I mean, uh, just from my day job, I mean. The, the thought is that like around five million dollars would be coming to a division like ours, um, which is a lot more than what we have. The support gap alone is like a big ask for us, I mean, it's one point nine million dollars, it's. That's beyond, and then there's additional like one percent from the state, there's stuff that's in negotiation about what the raises may be. There's a thousand dollar bonus like that could be used for flexibility to localities, so. And there's a lot that really could be still put out there that the localities should pass along to the school divisions, because that's what they're supposed to do, so.
So then back to your point, Dr. Frazos Cavazos, excuse me, I, I think philosophically, we have talked over the course of the last several months about. Developing a budget based on what we perceive as our need in order to put our best foot forward on behalf of the students and the staff.
I understand that.
And just parenthetically. There's an additional seven million that we shared with you last time that we didn't even put into this number here. That would be years two and three of the comp study, additional positions in the neighborhood of, of twenty or twenty-one. So, uh, as the board talks about it and, and really gives us some guidance in terms of. How do you want us administratively to, to best position this to move forward? We're, we're ready to take that direction and put it into play.
I think on a very basic level fundamentally, um, if the student populations is staying the same or even decreasing. I mean, if you take a thousand, um, non-citizen, well, citizens, but now we went from eleven thousand. And that includes a thousand, um, people who, you know, came to the coun- came into this country, so you basically lost a thousand students. But yet the administration is increasing, so those, those graphs are going in different directions. Right, so why do we keep increasing staff when student population is the same, I mean. What changes from year to year that all of a sudden now we're asking for a lot more money?
But I guess my contention would be that, that the needs of our students continue to evolve. And that the students that we taught five years ago are not the students that we're teaching this year or next year or two years from now.
In what regard?
Uh, readiness to learn, uh, the special needs that they may have. Uh, curriculum materials that we may need to provide. The, the system continues to evolve and change, and sometimes that takes additional funding. That would be my contention.
In addition to that, the, the, the compensation. Study piece is not just a, uh. Expanding. The number of, of people we're hiring, it's to bring. The current compensation to where we should be already, so that's not, that's not, um. You know, that's money that had, had we been able to. Spread it out over time, that would have been a, it wouldn't have been such a big ask in one year, and that won't be i- in perpetuity going forward. Because this is a one-time or potentially a two-time. If we're spreading it out over multiple years, ask in order to get us into a position where we can then hopefully remain. More competitive than we are with teacher salaries, so it's, does that make sense?
I understand what everybody's saying, but my, my point is, is that only so many citizens, they only pay so many taxes. I mean, there's a limited amount of money, and if, and if we're asking for more than we typically get, it may not be there.
Well, that will be, you know, part of, part of that is this discussion of what we're comfortable asking for. Another portion of that is, is going to be our funding partner's job to figure out. That piece, right, they have, they have the money they have and they have to allocate it the way they see fit and, and they have a lot of. Worthy. Um, entities asking for, for, for their support as well, so. Part of that is something to consider in how we present this to our funding partners, because our funding partners have been generous with us. We know that they want to support teachers and schools and students, and we know from what they've told us that our funding partners want excellent. Top-notch schools and they want, um, teachers to want to work here and, and live here and be happy here, so. That is part of their discussion at some point. Tonight, our discussion is what we are comfortable asking for, I think we need to focus on what, you know. Like Mrs. Henley stated, what her goal was, was really classroom assistance, right, or alleviation of ca- ca- classroom burden. In the form of not just raises, but discipline help, because we are seeing, um, higher than normal discipline issues. At an elementary level. Um, so other board members might have different priorities or different things they've heard, this. That's what we're here to throw out now, um, if you've heard other things, um, from people you've spoken to or.
Well, I, 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 I agree with the discipline thing, um, I, I, just today, as a matter of fact, I've had. Five different people come up to me and say that they have trouble with behavior on the buses. And four of those five parents said, we're not putting our children back on the bus because of the behavior. And we talked about that last month and, um. You know, that, that issue probably needs to be addressed, I mean, you got thirty-nine vacancies, some of it's money, some of it's probably work environment.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Chen, did you have something you want to add?
Um, in terms of just clarifying and just as a reminder to myself, um. My understanding from last year was, it might have been a year where we were asking our localities for, for less than what, um. Is typical, because, um. I believe there was discussion about how the ESSR grants ended last year, so there's a lot of additional funds that are. In here, um, that necess- that weren't necessarily in past budgets, um, so. I don't know, I'm kind of thinking of it, this is not so much as like. Too necessarily like high, um, it, it is high, it's higher than last year, but last year we had other. Sort of grant funding, is that correct, that sort of supplemented some other things, um. And this year, we're having to sort of pay for additional, um, we don't have as many, we don't have any of those grants. Is that correct? I just remember some discussion about ESSR funds, like there was.
Right, the ESSR funds, those ended September of twenty-four, so in the current year budget, we had a lot of positions last year. That we had to move into the operating budget.
Okay. Um, and then I would say in terms of priority, um, I mean, overall, I, I think that. Really, you know, if we go to our funding partners with this. I mean, I feel fairly confident that, that all of these have justification, we've had several meetings one-on-one. We've had meetings with, um, you know, Doctor Kever. We've had meetings with, um, you know, Dr. Kever, um. So I've I've gotten like a clear, I've I've been able to sort of dig into each of these, um. So each of these like requests, these line items makes sense, um, but in terms of priority, I would, I would agree with, um, I'll just. Say that I also agree with Ms. Hunley that. I I hope that as a board, we we prioritize the compensation study, I think at the very least, we need to be implementing. First year, um, and that was something that we didn't have last year, so that's additional. Um, so those are things that we've we've just needed to do, um. For the teacher scale, for the unified scale, um, and then in terms of positions, yeah, I think the. Support for behavior and then assistant positions and, um. Just from our school visits in the fall, a lot of the conversations were all around transportation, so anything else we can do to. To support, um, the transportation needs and the assistant teacher position needs, um, in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Chen, um, from our online board members. Does anyone have any input or comments?
I I have some questions if Ms. Donner's.
Yeah, you can go ahead, Mike, Mr. Hosen.
Okay, um, I'm I'm looking at slide eleven, the position request. Um, and I just wanna, I guess, confirm for myself and confirm for everyone else. These are positions that are currently not mandatory that we're required to have, is that correct?
These positions are not mandatory, um, they are, for example, teachers based on our adopted staffing ratios, but they're not mandatory.
So so this is just. Out of any, I guess, everything that we're looking at, this would probably be the the want as opposed to a need. Um, of of what we're looking at for the budget. Are we we are currently not fully staffed, is that correct?
That's correct.
My concern is us going to the funding partners saying that we want these additional positions. When we can't, when we are not fully staffed currently. So if we're not fully staffed currently, how can, my concern is the funding partners are gonna say, why are we giving you this extra funding? If we can't get the the positions, um, staffed now. And my concern after that would be them asking us, what are we, what are you gonna do with that funding if we give it to you, if you don't? Fund or if you don't have these individuals. So I I guess my concern with all of that is asking the funding partners for something that. Is not a requirement in this. Um, atmosphere and is, as going back to what Dr. Cavassos was saying, everything else is sort of remain constant. So a- a- at least the school population, so trying to increase these numbers, I don't. Think if I was on the school board, I mean, if I was on the board of supervisors, if I was with the city of Williamsburg, this is where I would have issues. Um, so if we as a board are looking into make sure that our funding partners, that that we're going to the funding partners with. Um, the the best, most accurate, um, budget request we can. Um, this is where I think that we're gonna need to make some serious cuts.
Um, are these positions on this slide? Are any of these staffed now currently? Are these all addition additional forty eight point eight five?
Um, the school support staff positions, the K five literacy core, the ones, um.
We're bringing in from the grant.
Bringing from the grant.
Great, so some of these are, so there are people with names in some of these positions now.
For instance, elementary security, that's currently a grant, that grant expires at the end of next year. There is no continuation, so we may receive that grant again for the last year. There is a, um, an expectation that we fund that partially, so there, that that number. The total number for the elementary security could be reduced by some amount if we were to continue to fund it locally and utilize the grant, but. They would not be available to us in fiscal year twenty seven.
But you don't have to go find nine.
That's right, that's right. Uh, and I I will say that, uh, as an organization, teacher wise, we were. Ninety nine point something or other staffed on the day, day one of school. We would always want to be ninety nine to a hundred percent staffed for sure, I I think that things happen over the course of. Of the year and people come in and out of the organization, uh, we see that far more now than we saw even four or five years ago. That it is, it is ever changing, ever evolving. I I do understand your point, Mr. Hosen.
Is it possible then, uh, just to to kind of tie the loop on what Mr. Hosen said? From this, from this slide on, uh, slide eleven. Possible now or after the fact to know which of which of these forty eight point eight five? We already are ac- have actual people with names in them right now, and how many we would have to go find.
Yes, we could work on that.
That would be helpful because this looks like find forty eight new people when we, you know, kind of struggling to pull. Pull people to, so what we have, but that's maybe, we're we're hearing now that maybe that's not quite an accurate reflection of what this slide is saying, so. That would be great.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay, um. When, yeah, once, I didn't, Mrs. Ms. Chen.
Oh, just as a quick reminder, um, when will we know a better sense of the percentage for healthcare? Because I know that fifteen percent is quite high, and so that would make a big difference in that particular bucket.
We continue to believe that's gonna be the first part of March.
And so we'll be able to make adjustments, like last year it was nine percent, so if it ends up being nine percent, then we can make that adjustment. Which be significantly less, or it would lower that number before we have to go to the funding partners.
In in all, in all possibility, you you may be seeing a a new number there. On the night that you approve the budget, or or somewhere in that realm as we work towards that.
Ms. Donner?
Thank you, um, it's just my two cents is. I think that there are, um, things in the requested positions that we should. Uh, retain, and so thank you, Mrs. Um, Ortago for us getting a little bit more of a split around those things. But I think that there are things that in there that help alleviate the strain on our, uh, teachers. And I also, you know, believe around like the security and some of those other things, like those are things that we need to absolutely continue. Um, in terms of the compensation and things, I'd I'd say my lean is that. I know that there are certain things that come in the governor's budget that if we don't take it, then we kind of lose all of those funds, so in that compensation bucket. Those are the things that I would prioritize. And then I think there's also some, what I call it, the lower hanging fruit around the new p- teacher pay training, summer school stipend requests and contract. Day changes, and then I think, you know, once we see what we have to do from the governor, what, um, are the mandatory increases? Then starting to look around the the teacher pay scale as well as some of these other positions to figure out where there might be some opportunities. Um, and I also know there's been question about, you know, increasing central support staff and and, you know, do we need to do those things, and I think. Just, um, you know, understanding from, at least in the conversations, like some of the maintenance assistants are really helpful. Um, like those are kind of grow your own opportunities as well as, uh, you're thinking about like HR and finance and accounting and payroll. Um, those are all things from a division, uh, perspective where we are kind of fiduciarily responsible for the division. And so I think those are things that I would, um, want to have us to continue to understand is. As we continue to grow and having a large division where we're already kind of under. From a ratios and those sorts of support staff, you know, what could be the potential implications to us? Um, as a division if we, um, have an error in any of those types of places and like from a, um. From a fiduciary perspective, so those are just things that I, you know, I'm curious about and just kind of ask board members to. Think about as they contemplate where cuts could be made, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Additional questions, Mr. Riffle?
Happy to give my position, um, I, I think we should, I mean, the mandatory increases or something, I'm looking at the the sheet that was provided to the members. Uh, is it public that that will, no, okay, I'll just.
Get the slides.
The slides, okay. Um, I I kind of agree with Mr. Hosen a bit about how much we're talking about for the slide eleven. Um, I I do know we have a lot of teachers inside that already, or educators in that. Um, I think the thing I mentioned last time was with the insurance stuff, I I think. I would like to see us make somewhat of a, like, a burden taken away from us. As, I mean, everyone takes this type of pay or this type of benefit in our division. Um, and the sixty forty would be like what we had spoken about last year, uh, as being serious. I don't think we take as far as going fifty fifty, I don't think that's ever something I wanna suggest, um, I think there should be, we should be taking on a bulk of what that is coming from our employees. Cause that's what the state does for most of its other employees. Um, but I I'm interested in seeing that ratio when it comes out. Um, but I think we give up to get it is the positions that I think Ms. Donner was speaking to, the things that kind of keep the lights on and things that we actually find is. And all of our division finds to be useful, um, like when things are well maintained and, you know, they get paid. Um, my last thing I wanted to mention was the, um. I'm I'm, I think compensation stuff is maybe like priority one, I think that slide alone is, um, why I'm here, I think, no, number six, so. Um, I know that the state will be doing a bit more in this category from, well, we know, um, that's still up for debate, but. I don't think people are really trying to mess around with teacher pay, I mean, in a big year like this, so. Um, yeah, I'm I'm standing with that, I I wanna see like somewhat of what Mr. Hosen was talking about earlier about what the nu- numbers actually are. Um, but I'm not really afraid to ask funding partners for thirteen million dollars because they've been asking us to kind of step up to the next level and. This is what it takes, it really, really just comes back to that argument of, we can't say these things and not do it, you know, um, um. And, you know, whether it's, you know, you wanna hear from me or that's what you've been asking for, and that's what our community's been asking for, so. Uh, I I really appreciate the staff taking this really seriously, there's a lot more we could ask for as well, um, I don't think it's really taken more than we are really asking for. Um, but it's, this is what happens when you're a wealthy community as well, you have a lot of center, you have to kind of make these decisions kind of at some points that you have to like. You know, take compensation into account, like this is not something I think other boards have taken that challenge to do. Uh, it's, it is a big step and if they do this, they do this one with the study is fresh is important, and that's something I won't be something away from, so.
Okay, um, I before I, I will get a a opinion from everyone before we close out, I just have, I have a question. Um, and forgive me if this is a silly question, but would the. Would the results of the compensation study be implemented before? Uh, three or four percent raises is added on top, or would there be a three or four percent raise? At each step that we currently have and and then the compensation study implemented?
So for individuals, for example, on the unified scale, using the Bolton's proposed scale. First, we would bring everyone up to the new minimum.
Okay.
And then they would get three percent so that we don't already create compression with our current staff.
Okay, so it's three or whatever percent of a higher number in most cases? Or am I not, am I not thinking of that correctly?
Yeah, I think it's the, our initial priority is on the the lower facets of the. What we're gonna call the unified scale.
Okay.
So that's where it.
Will be felt the most.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And how many? Is it saying here, how many employees would we be sort of hitting this year with the comp, the comp study?
On the, in the, the combined unified scale, we're projecting now in the range of about a hundred additional employees. Being positively impacted.
Beyond, uh, beyond that three percent.
Right.
Just like Ms. Ewing had just said, it would get, bring them up to that minimum and then get an additional three percent.
Okay, so the the stag, this this part that we're staggering is not pulling out, we're not, we're not adjusting compensation for s- certain. Steps or groups, the part that is being spread over multiple years is how much space there is in between the steps?
I think there, the there, part of the challenge with this discussion is that there are two different scales and they work a little differently. The the current support scale and the current administrative scale are open range scales with a mid, a mid and a max. And it's not stepped, the teacher scale is a step scale, so admin and support kind of go across. And the teacher goes down, and so just in terms of the way it's set up. Our genuine focus in looking at the initial round of the comp study and the six hundred thousand on the. The non teacher scale was to really look at those positions that are currently categorized as. A grade five through a grade sixteen. And the reason that we're doing that is because on the support scale, grade seventeen and beyond, that generally equates to where. On the administrative scale, grade one is, and so what we're, what we're really focused on. Are those staff members on the support scale or the new unified scale who are the least paid within the organization.
Okay. Um, okay. Uh, Ms. Chen, if you had to, um, support a, an addition, you know, a a number to ask for in our budget, what number are you? Comfortable with, or do you have a range that? Is it thirteen, you know, the full thirteen point eight, or do you feel like something should be scaled back some?
I just think there's, there's still so many unknowns, it's kind of hard to, I mean, from what Mr. Riffle was saying, we could see significant. Changes in the compensation considering what decisions are still to come, so. I don't, I don't know, like five million, is that how I, is that what I heard earlier in our discussion, five million, that make a big difference?
Like if today it passes.
So thirteen million minus five million, like that would go down significantly.
That's, but that's like, that's like rough math, though, like these aren't true formulas that we're talking about, so I I'm I'm careful what I'm saying, but.
We, we always build a budget before we know exactly what the general assembly is gonna do, right? So that's, it 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 does always feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, but that's, that's the way it has to be right now, and Ms. Ewing has to build. A budget starting tomorrow, um, and she's either gonna build it off of a number that adds. Thirteen point eight, or she's gonna build it off a number that's lower than that.
And just as a reminder, based on what's currently in the governor's budget, not taking into consideration the dialogue that's occurring now. We, there, there is a two point three six one million increase that adds towards that, so. I I don't believe it's an additional five beyond that coming from Richmond, uh, it. It could be a, potentially based on what Ms. Ewing shared earlier in the presentation, if the support cap is removed. Somewhere in the neighborhood of an additional two million.
Right.
So when you, I just wanted to be careful when you said, when you said five, we've already baked in that two point three. Based on the governor's budget. Does that make sense, Ms. Chen?
Yeah, it makes sense, I just think that. Drawing out a number feels a little arbitrary, like ten, eleven, twelve, I don't, you know.
Our challenge is as we start to put together, uh, the numbers to present to you on the eighteenth, we we need to have a pretty good un. A pretty good idea of what you feel most comfortable with as the, as the opening negotiation potentially for the funding partners.
I mean, I'm not necessarily uncomfortable with the thirteen, but then, um, you know. I'm, I think it's just difficult, we'd have to figure, we'd have to have a lot more discussion about how to get the number down and where, you know. So I could throw, I mean, if we're asking for what I'm comfortable with, and like I want to support, you know, the. The, this is what we feel like we need to have a successful. Um, funded school system, um, to reach our goals, so. Not sure what that means, like if I were to say, oh, I'm comfortable with ten, what what does that mean? What's the difference between ten, eleven, twelve, you know, what what are we looking at here?
Well, the difference would be probably a lot of. Position, I mean, it's not gonna be the mandatory bucket, right? It would be. Adjusting the, what we're gonna put towards the comp, what the comp study said, that would be a place to adjust something. Um, or some of the positions that we discussed, those are kind of the buckets that we have to choose from if we're going to. Make adjustments at this juncture, we are not, um, you know. Make adjustments at this juncture, we are not, um, you know, if, we're not. Taking a vote and signing something that tonight, e- even if, you know, whatever we tell her to go build. We're not approving it till later, so we will have more information, things will change, but we ha- she has to know. How to start and we can't, you know, we have to say, can, could we defend that number? If that's what it ends up being, could we sit across from our funding partners and defend the need, even if. Even if at the end of the day, they say, we're so sorry, we just don't have that much, you get X. Could we defend the fact that we are putting this forward, that's the, that's the question we're asking tonight? Um, Mrs. Hunley, what did? I know we've, we have talked to all of you about sort of your comfort level, but um, what number were you comfortable with?
Um, I would think in the middle, eleven point five, between ten and thirteen, um. I'm looking, well, hopefully, viewing audience will also be watching this. Way in too, because the, I know. Ms. Chen was saying she's uncomfortable sometimes just throwing out a number, I'm uncomfortable when I haven't heard from the people that this really affects. I would like to know, you know, what their priorities are as well, the people that are, you know, in the trenches, so. If we get that one number back of how many of this forty-eight, then maybe, um, that will bring it down some. And if some of these positions are hard to fill, instead of going, having four, we may trim that to two. Trim a six to three and see what happens that way, but again, my top priority is the top half of the school-based staff is. And the compensation study, so I would say eleven, eleven five.
Um, Dr. Kavazos, do you have a number you're comfortable with based on what you've seen tonight?
Based on what I've seen tonight, I, I'm, I'm not certain that thirteen point eight million dollars is a reachable goal. Um, if you wanna say, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, to your argument or to your discussion about being able to defend. I mean, if you got a, if you got a number closer to ten, you could probably feel very comfortable saying, we're not even asking for much, we just wanna. Be able to maintain what we have and increase a little bit, I, I'm just not a big fan of administrations getting bigger and bigger and bigger and. Student population not changing, and that, that's a bad ratio, ten.
What is the administration that you're pointing to?
The number of people that we're hiring, more, we're hiring, the administration staff, the whole, the personnel is getting bigger and bigger, the whole compass of it. Entire, uh, entirety of it, and the student population staying the same, I mean, we're like, not like, we have like. Five thousand more students, well, we have to get more people, I mean, I'm, I'm, maybe it's just a very, maybe it's a very um, naive attitude. Or my naive perception, because I don't know a lot of these terms in this, in this thing, I'm just saying that if you're coming to me and. Um, we can defend this, I mean, our, you know, this is it, we're gonna, we're gonna fall on our sword on this number. Um, and yet you're asking me if we can't get thirteen, we're gonna drop back, so you're already kinda saying, you know, that we could go down.
Um, the biggest, the biggest chunks in this really, and are, and what is unfortunate in the position that we're in is that. Not only is, is it unknown what the general assembly will do, which is always unknown at this stage in, in the game, but the, the healthcare piece is. Is really quite large and we're not going to get, uh. You, we have, I think we have had at this juncture somewhat better sense of actual numbers than the position we're in currently, is that correct?
I would agree, I think we last year were able to uh, get some type of initial. Renewal information from TLC on or about the same timeframe. That outside of the RFP process this year, we were informed. Because TLC is going through an RFP themselves, that we won't know that number, if we were to stay with TLC. We won't know that number until March or later, so we're. We are in a little bit of a challenge, which is why we feel like. We wanna put this fifteen percent number in front of you and all of us, I believe. Want that number to be lower at the end of the day. Based on what Mister Snow has shared with us at USI and based on what it looks like in the insurance realm. It may not be lower than that, but we hope that it is in any decision that we were to make.
Okay. Um, and none of us board members have a crystal ball that I know of yet, so, um, we're gonna, one se- one second, Mister Riffle, I will come back to you. Um, Mrs. Donner, can you just give us an indication of your comfort level?
Um, I'm. I mean, I'm uncomfortable just throwing out a number because I think it has a, a, a number of pieces that need to go into it. Um, but I do think it's more um, on that higher end of what we're asking for, and I think in, in. In my perspective is that we have a lot of ground to, to cover because we have been. Um, we have fallen so far behind in terms of our compensation, and so that makes. The numbers look really large in order to make up the gap because we haven't been. We haven't stayed pace and at some point you have to pay the piper on that, so I think that is, that is coming through, through. I also know that as a board, at least for the couple of years I've been on, we have not asked for a budget of need, and so while I hear that there are. Concerns about, well, the division isn't growing, yet we're asking for more staff, I think from my perspective. We have put all of our attention towards uh, rightfully increasing teacher salaries. Um, and doing pay raises, and so because of that, some of the things and infrastructure that we would need. To be able to cover and to do more special education coverage, to do more, um. Key to, you know, to do more of our, uh. More to, to support other students and, you know, we've got quite a big focus on literacy. There's a lot of things in here that support our educational goals, and so I think this is the first time that we are. Really providing a budget of need, and so therefore it is much larger than where we've just been trying to squeak over the line. With salary increases and healthcare, so I am in the higher end of that. Ten to eleven million.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner, Mister Hussein, can you give us a indication of where you're sitting?
Um, I, I s- I agree with Miss Donner, is that she was saying that, um, we've been focusing on sort of. Our salary increases the past couple of years and trying to get our employees back to where they, um, should be or need to be. Um, the downside of that is, we've basically proven. That we can function and we can um, educate our students. With sort of le- less employees, um, so trying now to say that we need more employees, I, I don't think is. Going to be a good selling point from our perspective. Uh, so saying that, again, I'm still looking at slide eleven, positions, what you were saying, uh, Madam Chair before. About which of these positions do we current, are we currently, have we currently filled and that we would need to fill next year? I would wanna see that number and basically only go with that number as opposed to the three point one million. Um, and then from there, whatever that total would be is what I'd be comfortable with.
Okay, thank you, Mister Hussein, I will, um. I will just throw out as an, in addition to what Mister Hussein just said, that we. You made the point that, well, we obviously have proven we, we can function with the numbers that we have, um. But we, we are seeing an in- increasing number of teachers leaving, and that places. An uh, a cumulative burden on those that remain behind, that is becoming exponentially greater because. We're, we're losing more, we're losing experience, um, it makes the hiring process be a year-long thing rather than a seasonal. Thing that, that has a cost to it, um, there's a cost to training new employees, um, and so. That there are costs to saying, keep doing, keep doing uh, more with less. Because we are going to lose teachers and some of, some, some of the adding of staff is not. Um, just because we're becoming bloated in staff ratio versus, you know, uh, the ratio of staff to, to students, it's because. We're understaffed now, which is placing a burden on classroom teachers and. Contributing to our attrition. Um, so those are numbers that are a little harder to measure on a chart, but those are, those are real and they factor in, so that's. That's why the, it's, the compensation study is important to get us competitive with our, with our, um. Other districts in the region, but we also have to understand the um, burden of the day-to-day within. The school buildings, whether that's a classroom or whether that's another position, and a specialist position or council position in the building, that is going to. Lead to more people leaving, which places additional burdens on the teachers that, that remain, so just as, that is a, as a. Another um, argument to think about in addition to what, um, Mister Hussein said. Um, Mister Riffle, you had a comment?
I think it goes somewhere with what you're saying, um, I, I would like to remind maybe the board and then the public that, at one, at one point we returned ten million dollars. Last year in, in attrition funding, um, and, and I think that's first a step of, we know how to spend our money and we use it where it's supposed to go. But, um, this is our cut back, we really need that money back now to kind of make up this compensation and, and if you can't agree that. That column is maybe the direction this division needs to go, I, I don't think we've been in the same rooms and conversations, the conversation is. All people are talking about across localities and, and I don't even think, you know, if we got that money, we'd spend all of it, like, I mean, I. We've, I've got, I've spoken about that, maybe the last meeting, and I think I agree with Mister Hussein in that regard, that category here, but the three point one, but. Uh, the other thing we didn't talk about is like accreditation is changing, I mean, like this is stuff that like we kinda have to get, get the ball with, and so you really can't reject the idea of. You know, well, we're just gonna try, it's like, you kinda have to do some of this stuff, I mean, you, you really have no choice, and then inside that conversation goes with that, I mean, like. As the standard changes, our educators also get frustrated, like if that's something happens in this year, like. I, I'm sure people can shake around the room that this is true, like, accreditation's not a fun time to go. You know, they're changing the way carpet rides as you fly on it, it's like, it's really not a good time, so. I would say like, this is a big step for us and we should really consider, you know, what we've been doing in the past, and I think it's an argument that we hear a lot from. Whether it's a BEA or from just teachers that see that one presentation, it's like, we, they, we get our money back to our taxpayers, like, and. But maybe the county, and I, I, I could hear Mister Apple saying it, like, you know, like, well, we like that money so they can spend it, right, like. But this is a greater return investment than almost anything that we can do in our division and our, our community, so. I'm, I'll stand behind this, I, I know it's pretty tough to, to say like thirteen million's hard to get to, um, but I know this day will do more in this year, I think there's a lot. Less time they wanna spend arguing about this stuff and more time for us to kind of figure this out and get to a point where our educators feel like they're. Getting what they deserve, so, uh, with that said, I, I think it was, I'm, I'm trying to kind of talk about attrition, I think that's really where I'm at with this, I, I really don't wanna see us. Come back next year and try to do this all again and be like, I wish we did this, you know, like, I wish, we, this is our moment, so I think you should define it and. We'll have to do another similar thing like this with the compensation study again, I mean, it's, it's how it works, like, we've proven that we wanted to do this, this is the first step in doing it, board, so.
And I, um, I know that the, the county did a similar compensation study last year and, and. Found that they were in a similar position, it's relative to their numbers, um, so we're. We're right in step with how they've been approaching their staff, and that's not meant to, to add some sort of. Pressure, but it's, it's meant to say like they, they recognize the need to compensate county staff and. We recognize the need to compensate teachers, and I know that our funding partners greatly value, um, teachers and school employees and. So, um, I, you know, it will be, you know, we'll have some conversations, the. This, this is, like I said, this isn't, uh, it's not a vote and we're not sitting it in stone, but what I, what I. I'm sensing is that perhaps the easiest, because we can't, you know, Miss Ewing can't build. Seven different versions with a, with a ten million and an eleven million and a. So perhaps, um, if I throw this out there, I'll, I'll get a, an okay or a thumbs down from all of you, but if we tell her to go ahead and. Just show us the, do the budget with thirteen point eight and, um, we will. Make adjustments as needed, um, is that something that you could stand behind tonight, or would you say now? I would, I would not, I would vote that budget down in March if that's, if that's how you proceed, um. Is, is that the direction we can give tonight, I will just go around, Ms. Chen, what is your thought on that?
I mean, I think given, uh, all the information we've been given, it, it makes sense to me and I'm okay with that for now.
Doctor Kavazos?
I understand what the ask is, I'm just not sure that the ask is gonna be that well received.
Right, but we don't have anything to do with the.
I'd be disinclined to ask for thirteen thousand, thirteen million, I mean, the, the difference.
Okay, so you would vote no on that?
Be disinclined.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Donner?
I think that's a reasonable way to start.
Okay, Mister Hussein?
I, I think I would be now going with the, uh, uh, thirteen eight at this point.
Okay. Mrs. Hunley?
I'm a yes with the thirteen eight.
Mister Riffle?
Yeah, for the two categories I mentioned and compensation and mandatory requirements, we should go towards this, I don't know why we did a study, if we don't wanna. Try doing this at all, like, we spent, I don't know how much money on it, but that's taxpayer dollars that they deserve to see going to educators, so. You should stand behind that, why did you vote for it?
So yes to thirteen eight?
I'm trying to challenge my board members and their thoughts, it doesn't make sense to me.
Right.
Why would you sit in a room and spend people's money to think about this and then not do it, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Um, I, I too, I'm sensitive personally to the burden on, uh, our localities and our taxpayers. Um, I think, given what has been brought forward and what, um. And, and the unknowns that we've all acknowledged, none of us feel super great right now about, about the numbers we're, we're looking at, um, and we all. I think we're all realists when it, when it comes to what the, what the coming months are gonna bring, but I don't, I don't see. Any other path forward that's not completely arbitrary and that doesn't, um. That, that would take out anything that we are able to take out right now, um. So I think that, uh, I think the only way forward right now is to build the budget that we're requesting and, um, and. Hope and pray, if you're a praying person, that some of these numbers change, um, I, I just don't know how else to, to direct. Someone to, to build a budget at this point, so.
That's helpful, we, we appreciate that, we will provide this week, just for your knowledge, what, what are currently staffed positions within the. Column of, of support positions, just so you can have that as in your mind, but we'll ask Miss Ewing and team to build it on the, the number there, thirteen eight.
I do, I, right, and, and about the, the FTEs, um, when clarification will be great, I, I know that some of the concern is. Um, we don't wanna build a bunch of FTEs into a budget that is already maxed out, if, if we know. We're probably not gonna fill them, because that just turns into, you know. I know attrition savings, it then goes somewhere else, but we're, we're so strapped right now that we wouldn't, we wouldn't want. We feel like that would be irresponsible from a school board perspective, to our funding partners to be throwing in FTEs that. We're like, hey, this, you know, but we have this many that aren't filled and this many that won't get filled, so I think that's been. That's been some concern, so as long as we can take that into account and let that be known going forward, that's not what this board is, is wanting to do. Um, with that being known, then, yeah.
Just have one clarifying thing for the viewing audience, at first you asked us to throw out a number and we all threw out numbers, the only reason why we. Went back to landing on the thirteen is because we couldn't have seven different numbers, I just wanted them to, people that are viewing go, well, why did? You know, just so that they know that that's what happened, we were not in unison, but this was something, then we would have went down had we not, possibly.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, cause it, it's.
And I have had, and I had conversations with everyone, and so I, I had heard some numbers, um. Tonight that were different from what I'd heard, so I think that it's difficult to.
Out there.
Right, no, this is a, it is a little confusing, because I'll be honest, I can tell, I'm, we're not comfortable right now, none of us feel great. We, we don't feel like, um. Sure, for different reasons, for different reasons, but there are unknowns and there are, there are competing priorities. But we can't, um, we can't just sit around and continue to not have a direction, so. Right.
Thank you, ma'am, sure.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I think we, we know what we need to do for the eighteenth.
Alright, we will move on from that and go to, um, action items, seven point zero one, approval of personnel actions. Seven point zero one, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to per, personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second? A second?
Sec, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
All right, well, we'll go see if we can run quickly through some board member comments. We just did a lot of talking, so. Mr. Riffle, will you kick us off?
Sure thing. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say welcome, Dr. Kiefer. Thank you for taking into the big shoes and, or the ride you're about to be on for the budget. And knowing that we're still young as board members, but I thank you for your leadership and the work you've done on policy for the division so far. And I'm, I'm just thankful to see you at the table. So thank you, or continuing to be with us. Because everyone wants to do this job, so. I just want to say thank you to our board members for somewhat of a great discussion on the budget. I think this is stuff what we should be talking about and it's hard to kind of wrap our brains around something that's kind of theoretical. But this is, it's all kind of real till it is. So I, I think, thank you, Madam Chair, for the time you spent talking to each member on that stuff. I know it's kind of, goes back and forth. I did learn a lot today, just I, I'm thanking Mr. Hoseng's perspective on that question about what FTEs do we have in that 42 is important. I didn't think about that, so I'm thankful for what we had tonight and with that. And then I do want to mention, I did mention at one other point in our meeting where we talked about budgetary stuff. We were seeking a large, nine million dollar project from the General Assembly for the construction of two pre-k facilities. They did make it to the House and Senate budgets, but they did not make it into, or they did make it to member request, which is a separate bucket. But they did not make it into the overall, like HB 800 and then SB 30. So it's a little disappointing, but there is still school construction grants available to us that we can apply for, which have been changed by some of our actions and thoughts about requesting something like this. Actually, other board members, other boards across Virginia saw that and they actually talked about like, why aren't we doing this? And then they challenged members of appropriations to make that more flexible and what those grants can be available to divisions. At sizes like ours or at the wealth disparities or the high LCIs, those shouldn't be factors and applying for those things hopefully in the future. So I'm, I'm, it's, it's a, it's a back burn, but it's exciting to at least have the conversation and the kind of move of education in a way that's more directed towards some of the stuff we're trying to do in our division. So, but yeah, I, it's going, okay, there's a lot going on the General Assembly. I usually do an update, but it's been a long crossover day that I came from, so. And then doing this was fun, but I'm looking forward to hearing some more about insurance. I think that's everyone's top of mind, but I, I do want to hear from more about the public, about what their thoughts are about the compensation. So I mean, it's the first time we've kind of seen it all in one large chunk. And I'm interested to hear more from the, the, the funding partners and their perspectives before the joint meeting. I think it's kind of something we don't do and I'm truly trying to tie that, break those walls down this year as this is a big step. And we really should be taking this into the, the words we've been saying for the past two years, which is like step up and give our kids what they deserve. So always fund our schools and I'm excited for what's to come. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mrs. Hunley?
Yes, I'm welcome, Dr. Kiefer. I was teasing him when he came in. I said, you picked the shortest month to put a lot of work in, but March is a long month. So may the luck of the Irish be with us through the month of March. We were at, many of us went to the V SBA conference on lobby, I used to call it lobby day. And we talked with our legislators and, and that was exciting. We got on the Senate floor and they introduced us and, but boys, it, it was just so formal to see everybody in their suits. And they were just, just meet, you know, it was a 12-hour day for us and I know it was longer for them because they started like at 5:30 in the morning, I heard some of them. But it was just very informative to see how things work. The other thing I was just going to say, if anybody likes sports, we have lots of sports going on. And I went to three different high school basketball games. I don't know if my heart could take it. The games were so close. And so if you just want your heart to race or to be excited about something, try to, to attend some of the games that are going on. And I'm excited, we're going to be getting back into schools next month, this month and next month. And definitely happy school counselor month for the school counselors. I was, I think I served twice as just a school board rep. And what they do, like I didn't know all of the responsibilities they have and which kids and how they follow them and these, it, it's to see it, it was just amazing. So we think of just their meeting, but it's more to it. I wish everybody could have sat through the presentation of what they do. And lastly, it's School Board Appreciation Month. And, and I know we appreciate all the people that sit around us and support us as well. And I want to say thank you because it takes a village and a lot of hard work. We're a team. And so it's not just about us. It's, it's all of us. When all of us do, one does well, everyone does well. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Chen?
I'll just make a quick comment about the math, elementary math textbook committee that I'm a part of. Just for the listening public, there is going to be for the community, we're inviting the community to the elementary textbook adoption fair. So that's happening in two days, so that's Thursday. So it's open to anybody in the community. Of course, we highly encourage our teachers. At this stage in the process in the committee, we are looking at three potential elementary math curriculum to support our students and our teachers and those that are, you know, sort of can support the Virginia standards of learning. And then I'll also mention that this will help the committee next week, we meet to narrow the three down to two. So we're trying to get the word out there about input with narrowing the three curriculum down to two so that then we can request those to be put in all of our elementary schools. And I also mentioned this, so the board is aware eventually all of this input will come back. So that I think this time we're really trying to make it very transparent, make sure that there's as much opportunity for community input in the selection of the elementary textbook that will eventually come to a recommendation to the board for our vote.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavazos?
Mr. Kiefer, welcome and thank you for your comments and your leadership. We've been approached, myself and Dr. Hoseng, about the idea of perhaps even developing a governor's school in WGCC. And he mentioned it earlier this afternoon, but he didn't elaborate, but it's, it's getting some more momentum, if you will. And I, I'm a little disheartened about the comments I heard today, but I know that this school, this division is focusing on discipline and, you know, student conduct. And I, I think we could maybe find some new ways to kind of beat that up a little bit. I'm shaking, guys can be innovative and creative and how to take care of that.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Mr. Hoseng?
Yes, the, probably the Division Safety Committee is rubbing off on me. So I've got some safety issues that I want to sort of bring to the board's attention and ask the administration to hopefully assist in getting some of these looked into. The first one is, in, in all these, I've had several parents come to me and, and ask me to look into these issues. That's why I'm raising, raising it now. The first one would be a walking path between the Whitehall Development and Stonehouse Elementary School. I can't remember, it was about two, three, two to four years ago when the, the busing issue with the driver started. And so we did the, the, the study as to where the buses would go and wouldn't go. And Whitehall was one of those where the busing stopped. It's now the students have to walk on a walkway that goes through the woods, is near a, a major highway or major road. Once they get past that, then there's no sidewalk anymore. And so they're walking either on the road or on the, or on the side in the grass. So it's dangerous for the children to, to walk to Stonehouse Elementary School. And, and so my proposal would be to, to look into seeing whether we can put a walkway in between Whitehall and Stonehouse Elementary School. There should be, and it shouldn't be that long and it should be something fairly easy to put in so the students can very safely and easily walk to Stonehouse Elementary School without being near the road. There's been some discussions that basically it's, the school board previously is the one that took the school buses away from that development. And so I think we should look into providing them a safe avenue of getting to school. We've looked at other developments and other issues with students walking to school for other areas. So I think this would be one that we should look into again or look into also. Second issue of protecting students is the current administration and the Department of Education is ending the inclusive facilities, sports, bathrooms in schools. And I want to know what we can do or what we are doing as a school district to comply with that mandate. I think we need to be leaders in this. We may not have a specific mandate at this point to do anything, but I think we need to be the leaders. We need to take charge in, in, in protecting our students in this area. Again, people have been complaining to me about this where if we don't implement changes, we could lose federal funding. I mean, we just went over our budget and so some federal funding could be lost if we don't start implementing these changes. Right before our meeting today, there was a press release where there may be an investigation. It's just five school districts in Northern Virginia on this very issue. So I think we need to get ahead of this and start implementing that policy now in order to protect our students. The final issue that I have is I would like to have a copy of the complete survey that was provided to students, I believe it was on January 24th, I believe it was to middle school students. From the, and the heading that I saw was Virginia Department of Education. The only one question that I saw was, how do you describe your gender? And it says male, female, non-binary and prefer not to disclose. Some of the questions I have with this, one, why are we asking our students this? Two, were parents made aware of this survey beforehand? I know we're supposed to give 30 days notice. Is this one where we just notified this parents at the beginning of the school year? Or is this something that we notify them 30 days, which I'm going to say I doubt that because 30 days prior to that would have been Christmas Eve. And I don't think we were sending anything out at the Christmas Eve timeframe. Again, I thought that we were going to be, or I thought we were advised that surveys of this nature were not going to be sent out from the school system. And I, again, it said that it was the Virginia Department of Education. And if that's the case, we still, I think, need to owe it to our students to protect them from some of these questions on these surveys. And hopefully we can look into it and get some answers regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. So those three things are essentially SBQs that you'd like written responses on?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, yes.
All right, well, it's been. So sorry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Donner. That was not on purpose. Go ahead.
I will be brief. It was wonderful attending the V SBA conference, as many of my colleagues have indicated, and being able to spend some time with our legislators. We have wonderful ones that are really interested in our schools and are committed to public education. So I'm very thankful for that and the time we spent. I think it's also a wonderful use of our time as school board members, being able to attend that conference in particular to hear all the different bills that were coming through allowed us to get a sense of what is some of the sentiment or the questions that are floating across the Commonwealth. And how can we as board members, as we got a sense of which ones might actually get some traction, be thoughtful about that as we move forward? And so that is all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Now it's my turn?
Yeah.
Okay. Once again, welcome to Dr. Kiefer. I, I know this is, it's been a big week. It's been a big, big week for everyone. And I know that change, even when change is good, change is hard. So thank you for keeping everything running like nothing happened, even though I know for, for all of you, a, a really big thing happened this week. And so just wanted to acknowledge that and pass that on to all of your, your teams and your, your staff because I know that's a lot. And the board is also here to support and, and maintain continuity as best as possible. And we will keep on trudging along through this fun budget process. Yeah, I enjoyed the, the V SBA conference. I got to be in Richmond last week. And, and yesterday and today I was up in DC with, with our congressman up there advocating on a, on another level. And so that's really fun to do that back to back and, and understand how it all fits together. And was able to talk about some of the, the federal funding streams that, that we do rely on, even though it's, you know, pocket change compared to some of the, the numbers that they're looking at up there. And I know there's a lot of cuts and efficiencies going on in DC and, and in large part that might be, we'll see how it shakes out. Some things, efficiency and, and savings can be good. But there are also congressional actions that will secure, I think, a number of funding streams. And they are aware of the, the most vulnerable students that rely on that funding. So as we navigate not only ebbs and flows in Richmond, but also DC, we will, we will keep a steady course and we will make decisions that are in the best interest of our students. And of course fiscal responsibility is also our job and our funding partner's job. And that's, that's a team effort. We have to work together with them on. And that's what these discussions and that's what these next couple of months are, are for. Ideally, we, we are all, and this local government, we are all on the same team. We're on this team of citizens of Williamsburg and James City County, and that's who we're all working for. So with that being said, I will read through our upcoming events and meetings quickly. Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet on February 12th at 3:30 PM in Lafayette High School Media Center. Special Education Advisory Committee will meet on the same day, February 12th at 5:00 PM in room 300 of the annex. And the Student Advisory Committee will meet on February 19th at 3:00 PM at War Hill High School Media Center. And our next meetings, our next meeting will be on February 18th. Closed session will begin at 6:00 PM here in room 300 of the annex, followed by the regular meeting at 6:30 PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. After that, March 4th, 2025, our closed session will begin at 4:00 PM in room 300 of the annex, followed by work session and action items with pre-budget public hearing, starting at 4:30 in room 300 of the annex. And I, I imagine that the pre-budget public hearing portion does have public comment.
Yes.
Even though we typically do not have public comment at our work session, right? So if you're, if you would like to comment on the budget, you can attend the work session on March 4th. Okay, our agenda for now is set for the 18th. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.